And taking them in order, we'll do the ninth of October first, the zoning public hearing document. And the transcript are the minutes of that meeting. So what's your pleasure on those? Joe did send out copies. We all received and I know we postponed them from last time because transcript was not available.
The big one. The big one. When you got separate?
Fifty-one pages. Those are the official link for that public hearing.
Yeah, it was in our other package.
Right. I was trying to make quite a few corrections. We have to be, but we received it, so I accept it. And it says.
Okay, motion to accept those.
Second. Yeah, I agree with, we should accept them, but I agree with Chip. Should we accept them as printable? We know they're our corrections. I mean, they're only minor corrections. Why don't we accept them?
The corrections aren't, they're an individual correction.
Yeah, yeah, minor.
The same, they came through with individuals. Mary said her piece. Dick said Dave's, Dan said his piece. And each one, you said your piece, I said my piece. We all said our pieces. So there's no corrections on those as far as I can see, but it's the corrections in my own mind is what should be going in the zoning.
Well, it's different than the.
That's different.
Yeah, just.
We're just looking at the text.
So we're just looking at the text of it.
That's correct. Any other discussion? Now we'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, sign us around for signatures. Our second set of minutes are from our last meeting of October thirtieth. Do we have any corrections to those?
The second page. Very first paragraph. What's that talking about? I know what it's talking about. Would anybody else know what it's talking about?
It's talking about.
I know what it's talking about, but would anybody else know it if they happened to pick up these minutes to read them?
We can add that. Uh, white fence, here are the air conditioners.
Yeah, for the air conditioner.
Okay, I'll add that in.
Somebody picked up a minute and said, what's that all about? What property is that on?
Okay.
The last paragraph.
Same page?
Yeah. Mr. Florrie said he had just picked up his packet and had not.
Spin.
Spin.
Spin. I checked and that's the way he used.
Spin the matter?
That's what he said. I just write what he said.
That don't sound right.
My Italian, what you call it, probably messed up, but it's good enough, I guess.
Yeah, I just wrote what I heard.
Okay.
What is?
Spin it. I'm not sure he wants to explain it, but.
I don't think, I don't know any explanation of it.
Red through the matter should be, but if that's what he said, fine. That's no problem.
That's okay.
Those spinning, no, then doesn't hurt.
Next, next page?
Sure.
Mr. Gallipault said he could not understand why the commission wants to meet when it does not know what. Is there something missing here?
The letter and unknown?
No, it would be accepted. Not known, I mean.
Yeah.
No, it's supposed to be known.
Yeah, I put it there after the W, so that's corrected.
The last page. Last page. Okay, fourth paragraph. Have we already discussed the, should be our manner? Send a man in?
Should be matter, probably.
Yeah, manner.
In which the bids were submitted? Fourth paragraph, second line.
Our manner.
Manner. Catch it? Down.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, that's an our, so that's correct.
Otherwise, I'm happy with them.
Okay, is there anyone else who has any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move to accept.
Motion to accept.
We move to spin them.
And to move to spin them. And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion's passed. John Paul is not here right now. He will be joining us later. He's at a school board meeting. He's their attorney. And he has a matter to discuss with them prior to coming to our meeting, so he should be arriving momentarily. So we'll proceed without him. Signing of orders or moving along?
We need some done, so.
As soon as he's.
Oh, yeah, I got him.
As soon as Clifford's done with them. Uh, questions for the floor? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Back in March of nineteen eighty-nine, a request was made by Mr. Florrie to install two lights on the Boardman Hill and the, uh, the DB lock drive in the Corlaine roads. And I've got the copies and I probably Karen should have a copy of this. Mr. Del Bianco did some research for me and pulled out the minutes where by it states that there was a motion by Mr. Gallipault and the motion's passed three to one, and we haven't got the streetlights yet.
We haven't got the streetlight.
We haven't got the streetlights yet.
Well.
I thought maybe because there wasn't a pole on the corner, but now that they put new poles up there, there's places for it.
If Ford took action and was putting streetlights here, then they should be there.
Does Karen want a copy of this?
What do you think?
That's what the board passed.
That's what we passed. They should have been there by now. I wasn't aware that they hadn't been placed.
Yeah, wrongs.
I don't know why they weren't installed. Yeah, okay, that's what the minutes say. Try to get those taken care of as soon as we can. Anything else? Any other questions from the floor? Uh, they're on a matter we'll take a little later. This is just.
I got a, I got a long agenda.
This is your time, Charlie.
I got a long agenda. I'm not going to executive session and I'm not Italian.
Whatever.
Krista Blumer, as you know, left. She did a good job for us. I hope we get a replacement reporter that did as good as she did and Jimmy Bandler, whatever his name. The sheriff's contract's coming up in December and we got into a hassle in March or whatever over the contract. I think it behooves this board to sit down with the sheriff and perhaps as he promised Zomias, he's going to give them an annual report. So he can, he can justify ours wages and whatever. Maybe this town ought to get an annual report from him and justify the twenty-seven thousand dollars that we contract every year. For three years, I've asked that the police departments put a report in our town book and we almost got the state police. With a hitting of a couple computer buttons, he gave me a fifty-foot long computer printout of everything that went on in the town. I think I'll ask it again that we put a, we request the police agencies for annual report. If a volunteer fire chief can put an annual report in as, as well as he does and itemizes every call out, I think our police agencies ought to awesome.
Right, can I just say something on that? I was questioning or wondering why in town we don't have any sort of committee that is assigned to cover police. I think that, you know, as Charlie said, we've got several different areas. We've got the constables, we've got state police, we've got the sheriff's department. And it's my understanding that in the past, the constables have not submitted any budget. And I think that that kind of runs into a problem for these guys who are out doing this job and that maybe we ought to have a committee from the selectmen that do oversee the police activities and kind of coordinate and find out what's going on.
Law enforcement committee?
Yes. And I think it's going to be more important too with the nine-one-one system coming in and all of these various things that I think the board of selectmen should stay on top of that and have somebody that's overseeing it.
I don't think that's a bad idea at all. We will work on that for sure. And we will be meeting with Sheriff Jones, I would imagine, within the next month or so, because he does send in a contract well before the first of the year.
It was December tenth that he signed it, right?
Yeah. Uh, it will be up for a strict review this year, believe me. By me, if no one else.
The clause in there, it went up from thirty days to a hundred and twenty days.
That's right.
Cancellation clause.
Yes, fully aware of that.
Yeah. The other thing, it's a smelly matter. You know, our, our quality of life up on Post Road, Poster Extension has been pretty poor the last couple of years with the construction going on up there. The warmest week in October, somebody was inconsiderate enough to spread liquid manure on that new ball field right out in our backyards. It's only, I'd say it's probably a hundred yards out in back of our houses there. I couldn't open the windows. I couldn't leave my garage doors open. My land is even with that property and my, top of my well is even with that property. And somebody, before they get an idea to do something like that, they ought to start doing a little consultation, consultation with somebody, see if there's any effect from it. I damn sure wouldn't want my well contaminated because of some liquid manure. I can stand the smell. I can stand the smell. I guess I can stand the smell. I was a little bit upset after I found out where it come from. The eighteen fifty-one Farmer's Almanac has a poem in there about the west wind, how soft it is and it's the best wind. Well, boy, it wouldn't take no farmer to come up there and smell that wind that time. It was just unbelievable. The other thing, I got pictures. I'll show you. Post Road Extension. Post Road Extension, we've got, we had over six hundred, six hundred cement trucks come up through there for the, for the city's project. We had over three hundred tractor trailers come up through there. So I'm talking about quality of work, quality of life. That's, that's a little minor. I'm talking about, I got two pictures that I took August nineteen ninety and it shows the, the road in front of my house. Pretty damn good-looking town road in front of my house. I got pictures here of September nineteen ninety-four. Here's the same road. That's what it looks like up there in front of my house. They unloaded, they unloaded excavators, they unloaded rollers and everything. And what you see, that little sign post that I put up there with a flag on the top, a month later, I got pictures of it. They just ran right over the damn thing like it wasn't even there. And they almost got my mailbox. And this is how my road, our road, your road, town road is crushed up, up along there. We had to patch on a corner of park lane. We had to patch on both sides of Birch Knoll because they went off the edge of the road and busted the road up. Crossing my mailbox, they had to patch, the town patch. Up above, I got pictures up above my driveway, town patched the road. I brought this up February nineteen ninety-four. It was brought up at the town meeting in ninety-four by other residents, not by me. You put the contractor on notice May of ninety-four. I had discussions with the engineers, city engineers and the subcontractor. I called up, a little bit upset when this stuff was going on. They come right to my house. They promised me the road would be fixed when it was completed, the project was completed. That was the engineer on a job, the subcontractor on a job. I waited September, September nineteenth, a couple of months ago, they repaved everything into the city because they were going to have open house up there. Come right, just outside the gate, that was the end. It looks like two separate, it looks like our road looks like junk compared to their nice road. I promised the engineer, do what you gotta do up there. You promised me, this was, this was back in ninety-four. You promised me you're going to take care of the road when you finish the job. I promised to get off your back, which I did. They broke their promise to me, to the town. They did not fix the road. Mr. Florrie said at the last meeting, we got talking about the Cooley's and if the, the site wasn't like that when the job started, then it's a contractor's responsibility. His quote, well, by damn, it's a contractor's responsibility to fix Post Road Extension. You go in there anytime, you're going to see it, it looks, it looks like, it looks like bomb craters up there and it's got to go through another winter. I got pictures. I got pictures detailed. When I showed these pictures to, to the guy from right, when I showed them the guy from Belvin, you know, they didn't want to do it. I got the dates, I got the pictures. I said, here's what our road looks like, here's what you did to the road. Then they start talking nice to me and. You, you as the town board ordered the town highway commissioner March of this year to do a report on that road. I never heard a report on that road. It doesn't, it doesn't take anybody with any knowledge of roads to come up there and see what the hell that road looks like and knowing what it's going to go through this winter and break up.
I think what we ought to do is have John and myself along with Marshall go up and look at the road and make an assessment of what needs to be done and then proceed from there with the parties, whoever are responsible for doing the damage.
Like we, like we talked here a couple of years ago, depending on one party, forget about it. There was, everybody and his brother come in that road. Every, everybody that delivered goods, delivered steel, delivered concrete, delivered everything within.
I think a letter should be sent to the city.
I'd like to do the inspection first.
Yeah, a letter to send to the city and to the contractor, maybe to our lawyer, whatever we have to do. Because I'm, we mentioned that to Marshall a long time ago when they first started, well, check that road because they're going to beat up on it.
There's a recently paved road, right? Before the project started, was it?
According to one of my neighbors up there, Birch Knoll, Post Road Extension was done identical time. And if you look at Birch Knoll and you look at Post Road, it looks like one road was done in the forties and the other one was done in the nineties. I got copies of these pictures and you get into litigation, you've got copies of the pictures.
Yes, sir.
While you're talking and writing letters to the city, is there a possibility that you can throw the Campbell Road in on that too? Because when Earth was doing the new highway, they used all their big trucks to go over there to build a new highway. And then they, nobody ever, the town's not our road, but they never replaced the road the way it was when they went in there. And that's a bypass, by the way, too.
I asked them about that and they told me that the town gets more use of it than the city, so they thought it was all right.
Yeah, and I thought that we've had a three-hundred percent increase in residential property for we were.
It's rough. That road is very rough.
Nineteen houses up there.
Yeah. They won't, they did a little bit of work there four or five years ago. They've moved it to nothing. They won't be back. I've asked them.
They did do some work on the Creek Road. We got them repaved some of that.
You want to talk to us about it?
The Campbell Road, I, I've approached them more than once. I've approached them about two serious roads. The Campbell Road and also that road from Woods, from Gleason Road from Woodstock Avenue to the town line. It's terrible. They just won't, they hold their own.
Is there anybody who can take them over?
No, no, no. We, they're their roads and, you know, if they're qualified for them, I guess that's what they have to live with.
We'll check that out, Charlie.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you.
Anything else from our audience? Now we'll move along. We have no help of building report this evening. Marshall is not here. Did he leave a?
No, I haven't seen Marshall.
Has anything said to him about the, the marking the cross rock up there?
I didn't talk to him. Chip, I talked with Dick Ben Big's son and he said he was talking to Marshall, but just waiting for a call from Marshall to blow up the door. I'm sitting here thinking.
Yeah, Marshall wants Cooley out of there, I think, before he does anything.
I think Cooley out of there. That's after the school, the school process.
Yeah, there's other markets that have to be done too. And he wants to do, yeah, he wants to do them all at once. Hi, Tom.
Hello.
You there?
Uh, anything on the highways other than that?
No, I had to get Marshall to bed by Sunday morning.
Yeah, I think we fared off pretty well.
It's the only, only two on the whole storm.
Yeah, other communities around the state and we didn't end up being too bad considering the kind of weather we had.
Recreation, Larry Dolbinary's checking into that phone bill situation we brought up last meeting.
I just got my new phone booked and if you look on one page, there's a paragraph about that that says if you want to terminate seasonal service, thirteen dollars or something. You keep the same number.
I haven't heard back from him yet, so I've got to wait to hear from him. Uh, under planning, Charlie, we have a, no planning tonight?
No, it's here.
Okay. Uh, David, are you no planning?
Um, not too much, mostly the bypass issue.
Okay.
I guess when you get to it.
Go ahead.
Well, I think you're, you have it under new business there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. Nothing else in general?
Uh, no, that's the biggest thing going out at the regional level.
Uh, Joe, I'm ready to go. Roger, we can let's go at this point.
Yeah, why don't we, you know, I'm not familiar with what.
I think most of this gathering is here tonight, so it wasn't on the agenda. It's something that came up later. Maybe you better brief these folks because I'm sure if I didn't know, they didn't know either.
Sort of the continuation of your last meeting. We met since then and met clear day night and it's got a revised scope. Discussion, there are still some outstanding issues that need to be discussed.
Okay.
Perhaps, unless.
All five fires received. Two, two fires.
We're all together.
Yeah, all together. Joe, I have two more, so you can give those other two fires, except they, if they commit one. What we did was, we met last Thursday, I think, there were reps from all the fire districts were there?
Uh, no, I think four, four were there.
Four, four of the fire, right. Had a discussion of several items. There were, there were some, there were some of the scope items that some fire districts did not want to be included in Sunset specifically. There were a couple that they thought probably only two of the fire district would be included in, so we modified the scope to accommodate those specific items. I think last time we were here, the, the total contract was seventy-nine eight. It's down to seventy-eight-two as a result of elimination of one of the fire districts from a couple of the items. I, I think the scope now is, is consistent with, with what we discussed at that meeting. The meeting went on probably two and a half hours, Joe, maybe, maybe longer. Seven and a quarter, ten. And so, we're, we're here to, we revised the contract. We limited that paragraph that you had concern about two weeks ago or when we went last. The, the latest letter from the state did have a paragraph that said the, the project seems to be stalled. I don't remember the exact wording, but there's, there's competition for the money and the town should decide that they're going to go after the project. But not because a lot of their folks need the money. In effect, that was the language.
Didn't we also already suggest we definitely needed the money and wanted the money?
Oh, yeah, they know that. Yeah, what they need is, they need a revised scope, the way it's going to be and a revised cost because we have not got back to them since they came with the, with the study of the whole town and then backed down a little bit, so. So, and they also knew that there were some, there were some discussions amongst the different fire districts on exactly what they wanted for, for items. The last issue that was left before we, before we broke up was, was the state has requested, before they issue the planning advance, it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but it needs to be sometime, certainly the next couple of weeks, how the, the fire district's portion is going to be apportioned amongst the fire districts. So that when, when a project is built, the state knows, the state has agreed they would, they would recoup just that portion from the individual fire districts that were assigned to them. And there was a discussion of, of how to, or how, how that was to be apportioned.
Yeah, I had a call from one of the gentlemen on one of the fire districts to reference to that. Is that, is the fire district make that decision? Or do we have to make that decision? I'm not sure. I just wanted to check out that one.
I, I think ultimately the select would make the determination because you assign the location.
We submit for the money, but we have to make that determination also.
I suppose you could defer it to anybody you want, but I mean ultimately when you reside.
Even that part of it will be up for us.
Yeah, I, I sort of threw up the fire district and said, hopefully you can get together over the, you know, the next three or four days and come up with a, with an agreement that.
Isn't that a little bit difficult to do right now, not knowing what fire district has what problem?
Well, realize, we're, we're doing a study and a lot of the items are very similar. What we did in the, what we did in this scope was to, was to limit specific scope items to specific fire districts wherever we could. In other words, there was one, there was one fire district that did not want an evaluation done because they, they already have an agreement. So they are specifically excluded from that item, for example. But a lot of the items, as we explained, once you do it once, to do this, a similar thing four times is really not four times the once. And so the question was, the, the question was, why don't you just apportion the cost for fire district? And the answer is many, many of these things that you do the first time, it takes a lot longer than to redo it four more times because there's some similarities. And so who gets, who gets the first charge? Who gets the, you know, so basically the way to do it. The first one, I think, as far as cost goes, is to divide, is to divide whatever that scope item is by, by some number. And there's a couple of alternatives. One would be divided by five, there are five fire districts. Another one would be divided by the individual users in the fire districts. Or I guess, or some other combination of, of costs. As I say, that does not have to be determined absolutely tonight. It does have to be determined prior to the state actually giving the town the money for, you know, approving, approving the, the, the planning advance itself. Does anybody understand what it's talking about?
Yeah, I do. And that's a decision that's going to have to be made and we should go for that money because money is drying up. That has to be done before you can go for the money?
No, no, I, my recommendation would be to sign the contract.
Yeah, go for the money.
And, and get this revised scope in. But before they will actually sign the approval letter and authorize the, the money to be dispersed, which means authorize the study to start, you're going to have to tell them how it's going to be. So that, as I say, that does not have to be resolved tonight, but it needs to be resolved, I would say, probably within two weeks. If, if it isn't resolved, I don't know whether the fire districts met and discussed this in any, in any.
No, we're just here tonight in our cause.
Pardon me?
I said, no, we're just here tonight to state our wishes.
I know Charlie Baker met with me earlier this afternoon and was, was going to try to, actually late this morning before we went to Billbury. Yes, yeah, I do, I do. I only made four copies. I'll, I'll put them all on this desk. They're all the same.
For just general discussion, wouldn't it be a better way of handling it if the fire districts meet first and can come to some form of resolution on how the money's to be divided up? You know, basically the town is only involving itself as much as to get the money here. And that's going to be about it as far as, you know, as far as we can go. We're not here to commit the rest of the town monetarily to anything else and there are people out there very sensitive about that. And, you know, once the grant is in, the money's available, then, you know, where it goes is, I think, the last step to be determined. And then everybody's pretty much on their own as, as each individual fire district. And if those fire districts can come to some common ground where they can decide how that money's to be divided, I don't think any of us is going to object.
Let's see if anybody objects tonight to a proposal. They're here. They're all here tonight.
Well, they are. Well, I think he said three were here, but we still would probably, it'd be a good idea to get it out there, Tom, sure.
Well, there were, there were four here Thursday, four of the five. And I guess there were three here tonight, so.
Which one wasn't Thursday?
Uh, Mr. Booth in the middle there. Andy Booth's fire district wasn't represented any of the way last time.
I think they all should be represented because, you know, there's a pot at stake here and a lot of people involved. And I would just like to have a, a meeting of the fire districts to decide, because they all have different needs, they all have, they're all of different sizes. So I'm not really sure what we're expected to do here. There's X number of dollars allocated to their needs and I would like to see if they could somehow resolve and how to divvy up that amount of money. I don't think any of us really know. Tom?
There's two things. One is they might not agree. And in that event, would you agree that they're going to come back to you for the decision?
Very well could be.
Okay, that's a possibility. The other thing is that the fire districts getting together would have to decide how they're going to decide. And it may not necessarily be a democratic decision. And so then, uh, one fire district might, or more than one, might come to you on appeal on the basis of equity. Uh, the decision made by the fire districts. In other words, for our fire district, um, we would, we would not be bound by some kind of a, of a vote of the other fire districts. We have our own interests. We're an independent municipal corporation entity and we, we have a feeling as to how it should be done. Now, it's not to say that we should dictate to the other fire districts, but this isn't a, this isn't a majority vote situation. We are not under the rule of one single fire district and one pooling of interests.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for a vote, I was looking for consensus more than anything else. If some, some solution could be found, you know, among the fire districts and not necessarily long enough.
Well, the situation is that you have some large fire districts and some smaller fire districts. And so the. districts, and so the smaller fire districts have an interest in, um, spreading these, let's say, fixed costs over the number of connections. But, as we went through each item in section three of the contract with Jefrain and Henry last Thursday, we went through for that reason, to see what, how it, what the fairest way is to allocate these costs of doing this engineering work among fire districts, whether it should be one-fifth, or whether it should be something else. A couple of cases, we said it should be something else and that can be dealt with. Uh, Jefrain and Henry agreed that the special services items, item five, item five, would be, uh, tracked by fire district and charged to those particular interests, and everybody said that's fine. The, um, but, but for, for all the other items that we went through, we said one-fifth was the way, uh, the fairest way to do it, because the cost doesn't depend on whether it's ten people in a fire district, or a hundred people in a fire district, the same amount of work has to be done for each one.
In, in a lot, in a lot of cases, that's true.
And the only items, like twelve out of fourteen items that we went through, that was explained by Jefrain and Henry, that that would be the fair way to do it, doesn't matter how many households are connected to that well, that well has to be studied and looked at. So, you have the situation where, um, we sympathize, uh, with a small fire district, that if you divide by five, they're gonna have a higher cost for a smaller number of people, you know, than the other districts. Um, but, what that means is that if you, if you did it based on the number of people in total, then the big districts are subsidizing the little ones. Now, if we're gonna subsidize them for the engineering, is the next step, we subsidize them for the acquisition, the construction, the improvements, the whole ball of locks? Doesn't make any sense to do that.
Of course, with us, I guess all we can deal with is this money, nothing else.
I know, but, but if, but if a small district says, "Well gee, we can't afford the engineering," then how's a small district gonna afford anything else? I mean, engineering's a relatively small part of the total, of any project like this. So if they say, "Well geez, we can't afford the engineering, you know, help us out," we, we're very sympathetic to the problem, but we're separate fire districts. We have different problems in every different area, they're all, they all have their different problems. Uh, so, uh, you know, that, that's the problem that's coming down.
Can you tell us from, from your preliminary things, you've met with every fire, somebody from every fire district, correct?
Well, I don't know about that, the last five, Joe, anybody?
Yeah, he was here once before.
Okay, yeah, so I, I think from now on, yeah. During the process of four or five meetings, we have, I have, or which many has met with every single fire district at least once, and then so, some fire districts, I think, two or three times.
And have you, have you looked at every system in place currently, or no?
We've looked at it briefly, but, but not, not, not to the detail that we really need to look at it for the study.
Right. My, my question is, could you tell, right now, you're saying basically that the first one that you started on actually has more costs initially because you're repeating the same study, so you're not charging the same?
Well, certain work items.
Certain items.
Certain work items would, would be, would be very similar, uh, from fire district to fire district, regardless of size, now maybe a little tiny bit extra, but, but substantially, substantially, once, once you do the first part of that work study, to do it, to do a similar thing four more times is, is much, much quicker than to do it initially.
I think our concern is, we wanna be fair to all the fire districts, and, you know, if, if the first, if you just took all of the money and divided it by the five fire districts, is that first fire district that you started with going to get hammered more because you had to go into all of these extra studies when you started?
Well, no, 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 because, because basically, you take, you take the total money, the total dollars, and realize that there are really two segments, there's a, there's a study segment, which is more of the office work and then this field work. We've already taken and, and set the contract up, so all of the field work, and that, and that is, you're physically at that fire district, that's very easy to apportion, and if you're at Hinsel Terrace, you're at Hinsel Terrace, and, and, and you, and the work you're doing there, you can't replicate at, at Pyroville or one of the other ones, you, so, so, as far as all of those services goes, those would be apportioned, not a portion, those would be applied to the individual fire districts, uh, and, and would be tracked with the work or system. This, the office work, where you're doing evaluation, for example, a lot of the things you do in evaluation, uh, would, that you do for the first one, or many of the things, you can apply to all four. And so, in order to track it, in order to track the time, if you, if you spend forty percent of your time for the whole task on one fire district, and then sixty percent on the other four, you know, how do you actually apportion that time fairly? What we're, what we're saying is, you, you really can't, you, you really can't really fairly apportion that time within, within tasks for the office work.
Yes, I'm, I'm not saying this for any decisions, we're not making any decisions, but I'm just throwing questions off, this kind of new to me. Is there a possibility, I'm just thinking of, when the distributions are actually put in, so to say, that if the smaller ones don't go a fifth, would the cost of their small system put them out of business, so to say? Or, you know what I mean, is there a benefit of splitting it five ways when one has got, what have you people got, eleven?
We've only got twelve.
Yeah, twelve sources, and it does sound, you know, way off, 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 I gotta admit, way off kilter. But what I'm just trying to think in my mind here, now that we're talking, this is, supposing that you get your studies done, and you distribute it however you decide to, then you begin to go, go to work, so to say. If the small system wasn't just considered a fifth then, or if some other system came in play, say they weren't considered a fifth, and it was just per capita or something to that effect, would it, would it, would the, the cost be sawed out of this world for them? That the, the eleven or twelve wouldn't be able to handle it alone, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I'm not sure.
Is this gonna, is this...
You mean, the, the individual repairs?
No, individuals, if they're gonna put in distribution, in other words, we're, we're now only talking the planning, that's what you're talking about. Right, but suppose you get beyond the planning, this goes way beyond the planning for, to make the decisions on whether it's gonna be one-third or per capita or what. I'm just trying to wonder if, there's how many up in your development? Forty, forty some odd?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-one or two, okay, thirty-one or two there and eleven there, that's, they've only got a third. Suppose when it comes to distribution time, the cost is gonna be as much on their thirty-one as it will theirs, uh, if they're in it for less than a fifth, would that, uh, they'd be burying the whole cost with eleven people, uh, I'm just trying to, this thing is...
I, 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 I think that Tom is right, the, the fifth really only applies to the, I mean, as, as I envision it right now, just to the planning portion, the, the next section would be fire district by fire district. Other words, if the cost of this is half a million, whatever the number is, say ten thousand, the cost of it is five thousand, it would be just, it would, once, once you get past this planning stage, then it really gets to focus on individual districts.
That clarifies it.
Yeah, well, we're on it anyway, in other words, well, I know, I, I just hate to leave them hanging after us.
What might happen, though, is that, is that, you know, there are, there are farmer's home, I don't know if it will be after...
The money dries up.
Yeah, the money dries up, there may not be anything, but, but historically, there have been farmer's home grants for neighborhoods with income below a certain level, and there absolutely haven't been for income above a certain level. Now, I don't know the income within the fire districts, but, but just driving around, there were certain districts that would, would seem to have probably lower incomes and fire districts with higher incomes, so there's a, there's a possibility, and that'll certainly be discussed and evaluated as a part of the study, that, that for some of the smaller districts, if the costs are high, depends on what the water rate would be and all of those, all those items, there's a possibility of additional grants. I don't know that, that, that program's gonna be around a year from now, but historically there have been, so, there might be conceivably some offsetting factors to help some of the smaller districts if their costs were proportionally higher than some of the larger districts. But basically, we're talking, John, or just, just, just a planning stage.
Absolutely, well, that's all we're really involved in, the only thing is, is that may make them help your decision here on what happens after the planning, that's all. We just wanna do what's best for them, that's what we want.
Yeah, we want everybody, you know, to get enough to get the job done.
They're, they're gonna be a separate entity once it gets over this plan.
If you took it and divided it equally, and then say one fire district didn't need to use all of their planning advance money, could that money be then given to another district that did need more planning money, or no? Is that set in stone?
It doesn't help them, it doesn't help, well, it, it, not really, but it doesn't help, because, because the planning advance, if you build something, has to be paid back, and you have to pay it all back.
Right, I understand.
In other words, if, 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 if you have, if you use five thousand now, when you build something, you have to pay back five thousand, so it doesn't help to have you use seven thousand, that means you gotta pay back more, so, uh, it, it, it would not help to give, because, because planning advance is an interest fee loan that's, that's paid back if you build something. It's not a, it's not a grant.
If, if one fire district bears an unfair burden of the engineering, uh, unfair on the high side, and then they go forward with the program, they have to pay back sixty-five percent of that...
Of that high side.
High number. If, if another fire district doesn't go forward and doesn't do anything, doesn't use the study, they don't have to pay anything.
Suppose that they did use the study and it was much less money, of course, the portion of it, would there be a decrease in there, or...
No, they have to pay back, yeah, but, but that's, I think that's why the state wants the decision upfront.
That's right.
They don't want games played later on.
No, of course not, I can see that.
And so, it has to come down upfront.
But wait a minute, if another one with less goes forward, and another fire district has picked up part of their expense of the study, their sixty-five percent...
Is being subsidized.
Is being, they're not paying a full of what? Do you understand what I'm saying? They're not...
Paying their share.
They're not paying their, somebody else still is picking it up if they move forward.
It might be, see, it might sound reasonable to talk that way, five fire districts distribute the cost among, equally between the five, uh, fire districts, that sounds very logical on paper, but you're not taking the human element in there. There are only thirteen households in a fire district, yes, it has a name, Fire District Number Five, or Fire District Number Two, Three, or Four, it doesn't matter, they all have names, but it's just as a resident in a town, you send your children to school, you're an adult, you're a retired person, you're a senior citizen, you still pay the taxes to support that community, and, because you're a part of that town. Well, all five of us fire districts got into this mess because we have no, we do not have good water. We only are part of this engineering study to solve a major problem that is brought onto us, all five of us, by someone who is supplying us with water, and he's the first beginning of this whole thing. The fact that we're distributed into different numbers and different sizes is not the reason we're going for this grant. This grant is being given to us, or we're asking for it, or we're all trying to receive this funding, so we can solve a major problem, and it's among all of us, not among Fire District One, Two. Yes, it is monetary, and everybody does have feelings about that, we do too, and, and if you take, you know, a, a very small community that we are, with retired people and, and, um, it's just hard, it's a hardship to try to absorb the major cost, and we have no alternative, we have some, we don't know what our alternatives are, we don't know what to do, I mean, you know, everybody, everybody's in the same boat, we all bought property and we all have bad water, and we're stuck. And it's not individual, and it's not by names of fire districts, it's everybody who had Mickey McLaughlin, Sunshine Water Company's water, period, and that's what the study's being for, is to, to alleviate that problem among all of us. We're equally in this boat, not by little subcategories within the boat, yes, it's, it's too bad, it's expensive, but I think it should fairly be done by household, um, instead of by fire district.
Looking at how much, uh, of this grant money goes to the fire districts, how much goes to our well?
I think forty-eight or...
Thirty thousand.
Well, it's a, it's a little more than that now. It changed a little bit, it's, it's... The, the maximum for the, for the, uh, fire districts is thirty-nine-seven, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, and the towns is thirty-nine, thirty-eight-five. It's a little less than forty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, so eight thousand dollars a fire district, if you split it.
And, and it's not quite that much because of the, of the, the time and expense side in some fire districts, I'm not participating, so, the cost ranges roughly from about sixty-five hundred to ten thousand, depending on how many of the special services you need. If you don't need very many, it's as low as sixty-five hundred, if you need everything, it's about ten thousand.
But it's, it's, you're, some aren't participating?
No, no, some, some, some do not need every item in this, of, of, every item of all the scope items, for example, the valuation, one, Sunset's already agreed to, to, they've already got their, they've already got their, uh, agreement to buy the system from, from Mickey, so they don't need an evaluation, for example, so they said, "Don't do that," so we, we limited that from the scope.
Like, there's a lot of hair splitting here, and it puts us in a situation where we really shouldn't be and don't wanna be. You know, we wanna take this money, we...
And, and we're only talking a couple of weeks, or...
Somehow we wanna disperse it to the fire districts, and you know, and then we'll move on with business, uh, you know, it's, it's extremely difficult dealing with a situation like this lady mentions, and I appreciate what Tom is saying, but, you know, what do you, what do you want from us?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of in the middle here, I mean, you know, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of money that needs to be paid back, and there's a number of ways to, to pay it back, and the state just wants to know how, you know, what, what, what portion each fire district will, will agree to.
Was it your impression that each individual household would pay so much or pay so much?
No, it was my impression that the engineering study would be done, and based on the results, each fire district would choose whether they accepted the results and went, followed through on the recommendations, and if they followed through on the recommendations and they, um, connected with City Water, or did whatever the recommendation was, most advantageous for their district, then they paid back their portion of the planning advance money, or the grant money, okay? But if it's distributed among five fire districts, even though this engineering study is being done for all of the people involved in all five fire districts, and a lot of the costs are administrative and office and, like he said, uh, costs that can't be broken out by each fire district, it's cost that has to be done for everyone, then distributing it, when I say everyone, why couldn't those costs be done for every resident, every household, every connection?
You know, five districts.
Instead of by five fire districts? One-fifth is a lot of money to bear when you're, when you take that lump sum money and you decide, "Yes, we wanna hook up with City Water," you take that lump sum money and distribute it among twelve or thirteen people, or you take that same amount of money and distribute it around thirty or forty, or whatever those larger fire districts are, they're paying a very small portion of the same cost and expenses because they're spreading it among a larger number.
But that's gonna happen continually, though.
Pardon?
That's gonna happen continually, I mean, once you get into, no matter what each fire district decides to do, if you decided to hook on with City Water, all of that cost is only gonna be shared by those people in that fire district, because those are five separate entities, five different municipalities.
Yeah, it almost appears that the, the only real problem here is gonna be in dividing the planning money, really, you know, that, I, I'm much clearer on that now. It almost appears that the only division problem is in the planning money, because after that, each one of you will be on your own, and if it costs you twenty dollars, your people pay back twenty, and if it costs them ten, their people pay back ten, so it looks like you're gonna have to make a decision, the planning money, I guess, is where the problem, but otherwise, I think it's gonna be like you say, I think it'll only be what you're, because you're gonna be acting individually, is that what I'm hearing, once this is done?
Individual, individual fire districts, that's right.
But my concern is that...
Well, no, 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 that's, they don't have to, that, that there are two or three fire districts that are together, and there's nothing that will preclude two or three from getting together, I don't know, I, I don't know the absolute answer. One of the options is operating totally independently, certainly, another option is maybe combining some combination, so, I, I, I wouldn't preclude that, but that's not a given, that, that may, that'll be evaluated, it'll be discussed, and some costs will be put on that, and, and it may be advantageous, but the fire districts will decide individually what they wanna do.
Could the, the head ones of each fire district get together and see how they would like to handle this and come back to board?
The prudential committees could get together, but some of the prudential committees aren't even formed yet, and won't be, for a while.
Yeah, I've got a couple more to go.
So, what we're saying is, there's no way that, the committees could be ready, however, we have to be ready to, to, to give this decision, to get the money, that's...
The state has asked for it now, you know, we, I, I guess we, we could write a letter saying that, that decision's being made and we'll let you know as soon as we can. saying that, that decision's being made, and we'll let you know as soon as we can.
But is that going to hinder us in getting the money?
Well, we'll find out. They'll let us know.
Yeah, they'll let us know right off, if that's what you, if that's what you're gonna do.
But my concern is, if we don't do it fairly across the board, then we're committing certain fire districts to pay for somebody else's fire district. And that's gonna be something that they're gonna have to pay back. It would be one thing if this money didn't have to be paid back, but that money's gonna have to be paid back, and are we in a position where we can commit somebody else to paying, basically, taxes for somebody else?
And yet we know that the prudential committee in the small district is gonna want it one way, and the prudential committee in the large district is gonna want it another way, and they're not gonna agree unanimously.
And you basically have four against one, because all of the four are larger than us. We are known as small.
What's the next, what's the next?
We, we opt to lose anyway.
We know what all the fire districts are per capita.
Well, roughly, uh, Pyco Villa is thirteen, roughly. Sunset is twenty-four. These plus or minus a few. Mountain View is thirty-five. Countryside is thirty-two, and Killington is thirty-five. There may be a few, few differences depending on a few vacant lots, but that's the, that's the numbers we have.
I estimated that, um, if it were based on the number of houses connected in total, that Mountain View Estates would pay twenty percent more, and Killington Heights would pay thirty percent more than if the engineering's allocated on a per-system basis, with the exceptions that we agreed to the other night for specific items. So that's a big percentage.
Yeah, and I, this is only discussion, and I'm only throwing it out, but I can see in a way what she's saying. She's thinking that, okay, the whole district is paying that, that one fire district's paying twenty percent more. But if you've got thirty-five people paying the twenty percent, it's still a lot less per capita, probably, than if you've got eleven people paying-
Sure. And a lot of it's administrative work that's being done for everyone anyway. It's not being done individually for the fire district. He said that just earlier. He explained that the costs are, are cumulative, or however you wanna say that. They're, they're for every aspect and every individual. It's not by-
How did Charlie feel when you talked to him? How did Charlie feel when you talked to him? Isn't he the, yeah, isn't he, he, he's the-
I can't, I don't wanna-
No, okay, okay. No, you said you talked to him today. Yeah, okay. No, I don't blame you for you don't wanna talk.
And, and as we point out to me, it isn't, it isn't as simple as, well, if we did one, would it be twenty percent of five? And the answer's, no, it wouldn't be. It'd be quite a bit more. Probably be forty percent to do one. So, you know, there, there are some, there are some economies of scale to be doing, to be doing five as opposed to one, because some of the things, you see, you do it once, and you do it four times. Now, there are, there are differences with some things that aren't that, that way, but there's, there's certainly economies of scale.
We, we, we feel sympathetic with the small fire district. We hear what you're saying, John, about the number of people, and we recognize that, but the point is that, um, what's fair is fair, and, and the work has to be done for each entity.
At this point, I know it's fair. You're right. I agree with you a hundred percent.
And now, it, but if, but if the selectmen want, want to, uh, want to support the small district, then maybe the town could give them a subsidy. If, if, if you're not willing to give them a subsidy, why should a fire, one fire district subsidize the other if the town won't do it?
Yeah, I don't think we can. I don't think we can discriminate. How can we not for you and, and for them? So we have a problem.
Yeah, you can't. So you get into a-
No, I, you know, what's fair is fair, and I agree with you. You may have it the fair way. I don't know. I've just told these questions off because it looks to me like there's gonna have to be some decision making here.
I don't think, I don't think you'll get the committees to agree.
I would see them try to get together and have a meeting of your prudential committees.
I don't think, John, that, that is gonna solve the problem, because you have four fire districts that are large, basically.
No, we have, we have five areas in town that all have a problem because of a water system owned by Mickey McLaughlin. That's what we have. That's the common element here. One company has caused all five of us communities to first become fire districts, which we weren't, which we didn't wanna be. We don't wanna be landlords of our water. We bought homes with a water system in place, thinking it was good water, and it's not. And we have a, we have a, an owner of that water system who is not taking care of it, who is not meeting the state regulations, et cetera, et cetera. That's the common point here. That's the reason for this study. That's for all of us. That's, the only reason there's the subcategories of the five fire districts is logistics. We have to do it that way, because that's the communities where we live, and that's the way the regulations go. But the problem that we're trying to solve, which is the answers to our solution, I mean, to get answers to these problems, is all of us, all five of us have the same problem, because Mickey owns this system, and we need a, a solution to it. That's what we're going for the money for. Everybody in these communities is going for the same reason. It should be equal. We should be all paying for it.
The only equitable way that I can see is this preliminary work that pertains to all of the fire districts, you put down on a connection basis, you have-
Connection basis, exactly.
A connection or per capita basis, or whatever you wanna call it. And the, uh, the other work that pertains to the individual fire district, that is the responsibility of the individual fire district. I think that's the only equitable way.
Keep it separated, separate report. But that's, I mean, we're, we're in one of the larger-
You're in the biggest one, aren't you?
No.
Oh, no?
We're not the biggest.
We're in one of the larger ones, but I certainly can't.
But if you're talking just the individual, just the preliminaries, because that's really all that we're, we're talking about. We spent hours on it the other night, and we're here again tonight.
By per capita, by per capita basis? Oh, yeah.
When you're doing your preliminary study, what are you actually doing?
Boy, we, we spent three and a half hours going through that.
Just briefly. You don't have to go through the whole scenario.
Yeah, there's a, there's a five-page scope. It, it really isn't brief. It's, it's evaluating the system, coming up, it's, it's reviewing the system, evaluating the system, coming up with a, with a, a value for the system. It's coming up with alternative recommendations and costs for, for different alternatives. As I say, there's a-
What's your price for that? Approximately?
About forty thousand dollars. For, for all the systems, approximately.
Right. That's what I wanna hear. All of the systems, not one, two, three, and it stops there. We wanna know the round figure for the whole ball of wax, and when you give one figure, that should be the total for five districts, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, your next guy.
Round figures.
Yeah, finale.
Now, how you gonna split it up?
Now, it's to be eight.
Eight over here, and eight over here. It's gonna be hard feelings, always.
Because what I keep hearing here is, okay, we got thirty-two people, we got thirty-five people. Uh, I believe I heard you say early on that one of the districts had already made a decision to buy their well. Are they-
They've already negotiated the deal.
Right, okay.
They've gone beyond the decision.
Are they using some of this money to buy their well? Okay. Are they included in an allotment, then?
They are included in some of the items that, that, that would be applicable to their five districts, and they are specifically excluded from others. As I said, for, for example, the valuation one.
Other words, you can pick and choose what you wanna-
And that's, and that's what we did for three and a half hours on Thursday night. If, if, if there were some things that weren't applicable for your five districts for specific reasons, and there were, and there were two or three items that were, that were specific to a couple of fire districts, we excluded those, and that, that scope has the exclusion listed right in it. So, in those cases-
At this particular time, Pyco Villa would have to go through the whole ball of wax, because you haven't really checked out anything.
I, I don't remember. I, I think you, I don't think you're excluded from anything.
No, we threw everything, because the well system was the only one. Everybody else didn't. We needed it.
Yeah, so I, I think you are.
Be inclusive.
Now, what would be, what would be different from your system, perhaps, is that of the, of the items that would, that would be allocated by fire districts, because your system is physically smaller, probably there'll be less time required to, to actually assess it. So, in that case, you, for, for those items, you would, you would only be charged for the time that was spent at your five districts, as opposed to a larger district that might be a little more costly. But, but that's already, that's already a portion. Those will be a portion now by five districts.
The costs are gonna be greater for the larger development in the long run because of that. I mean, even though the planning money might be, at one point, when all of these other houses, if they decided to connect with the city, and they had to run all that piping and everything, that whole fire district is gonna be responsible for paying for that. So if there's thirty homes in that fire district, it's gonna cost that district more money, ultimately.
It's easily depending exactly what the-
Well, you're gonna have to, because you're gonna have to lay the piping. I mean, that's gonna cost you-
Depending what the ultimate solution is, right?
Right.
If, if you have to relay all the distribution piping in all the fire districts, certainly the larger ones will cost more than the smaller ones.
That's not in the preliminaries.
But that's not why we're studying.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, it's not gonna be fair any way you do it. It's not going to be, everybody's not gonna be happy with it, and it's going to cost the fire district, where it might cost a fire district, a smaller fire district, more money initially in the planning, it's going to actually cost the larger fire district more when they get into the actual work, which is what's ultimately gotta be paid back, anyway. It's all gotta be paid back. I mean, a proportion of it.
Yeah, however, the larger fire districts cost more to set up, but then you've got more people portionally paying back.
Right, I understand.
So I think that all balances off, yeah. Right, paying back, right. Right. Yeah, in other words, if it costs you fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna have thirty-five people paying that back, or if theirs cost them twenty thousand, you're gonna have ten people paying it back. So, yeah, I guess the problem here is, is that if they can only, if, if you, 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 uh, you have-
Prudential committees can only come up with something on this planning. It looks like the planning is, is a big problem.
Well, looking at it, about three hundred and eighty dollars, we took the houses that are involved, all the houses added together, right into forty thousand dollars. It's about three hundred and eighty, eighty-five dollars per house. We're just split the money up among all the parties involved.
You said three hundred and eighty, Rob?
Pretty close to that, yeah, right around there. Using Kip's numbers.
Because the reason I was-
They love him on.
Wait, wait, just a minute. Uh-
It's about three hundred, three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I, I had, I had about a hundred and thirty-nine connections, and a couple people said that there were vacant lots. It might, I think it's more than a hundred and forty total.
Well, I, I used a hundred and thirty houses, and the forty comes up, about three hundred and eight dollars a house.
I think, right, but, but I think it's more like a hundred and forty, Kip, maybe even more than that. I think a couple of these, I think Charlie this morning said that, that a couple of these had vacant lots that, you know, would, would typically be connections for most systems. So I think, I think it's probably more like a hundred and forty-one or a hundred and forty-two, and certainly at least a hundred and thirty-nine.
So that, that, that's been it down.
So it's been down a little bit.
That's been it down, around two hundred and, right, 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 right around three hundred dollars a household.
A lot different than one-fifth of that total cost, divided by three, thirteen.
It'd be two eighty-five if you divide it by two houses.
But the districts are only charged if they accept one of the proposals, right?
Build something.
If they build something. So only required to pay it back, so.
Well, are we gonna continue to have our water the way it is?
Yeah, well, that's-
That's up to you after you get the-
We can't. Nobody can.
That's up to you after you get the, uh, the decision, the recommendation.
Well- You might be able to buy it, buy your district, but then you'd have to-
We'd have to meet federal regulations, and you can't do that either.
Somewhere along the line, you're gonna bond with something. Well, exactly. But I, I don't think it's equitable to, to fight it by bond.
They, they all bond. I think the old fire district-
I, I know, I know, John, but-
No, I say, I think it's, I think it's-
But the bond has to be paid back also. I mean, the bond isn't free.
Certainly, yeah, but I think they stretch it out.
And, and they're adding, you know, eight, those folks, eight thousand dollars, split amongst ten households, as opposed to our district, which is thirty-two. I just-
Well, I, I don't think the French Henry's gonna, uh, uh, do it that way. I think they're just gonna, uh, going to, we'll say Pyco Villa, and what they spend there, that's, that's the money that, uh, they would have to pay back sixty-five percent of it.
Right. That's what I was trying to get him to say early on. Our district, whatever the charge is.
Am I right? No, 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 four portion, four portion. There, there are two segments, there's office work, and then there's field work. The field work, because we'll be there, and so it's very easy to track. You spend four hours in this fire district, and four hours in that fire district. It's very easy. It's four hours, four hours. If you're working in the office, and you're doing evaluation study, for example, you have to put together cost estimates, and, and, and when you do the first one, you're, you're probably forty-five percent there to doing all five. So who pays the, for forty-five, and, and you, it, it's a, it's a, it, I don't know of any really fair way to try to apportion the office cost per fire district, because there are some economies of scale.
That, that's as far as I'm concerned.
We shouldn't be doing this.
Most equitable way is for-
Shouldn't let each fire district-
A connection for each, each connection, or per capita. That's the only way you're gonna come up with anything, unless you sit there, uh, you're a man that's doing the work in the office, say, "Well, at the end of the day, I spent an hour here," or, or "Pyco Villa, I spent two hours in Countryside and State," and so on.
And then that's gonna cost more, because it takes more time to figure it all out.
No, no, it, it, but, but honestly, there-
Yeah.
As I, as I said, what-
Don't tell me it doesn't. I do favor.
When, when, when you do a, 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 a item that, that has a lot of commonality from all five fire districts, you do one first typically, and then once you get one done, you take that form, and you do it four more times. It's gonna take like forty percent of the effort to do the first one. So who gets charged the forty percent?
Well, wait a minute, but why isn't in that type of situation, this gentleman's suggestion a fair one, that you do it per capita, per hookup? Never mind that the first one you do incurs forty percent of the cost.
Well, that's fine.
But let me finish. If they're all gonna benefit from it in the end, they're all gonna get the, instead of doing a cost analysis, doing the benefit analysis, if they're all gonna receive the same benefit, why not? I mean, I, I haven't heard you respond to that.
Well, I, I had no objection at all. I, I, I don't know. I, you know, they say, "What's a fair way?" I mean, there's, 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 there is no a fair way. There's just, there's a num, it's, it's how is it gonna be financed? That, that's certainly a, a legitimate option, is to, is to do it by individual.
Tom, what's your response to that?
Well, I, I thought I explained that, uh, that as we went through these dozen or more items with refrain Henry, we discussed the details of each work item, and he said, "Yes, this work item should be divided in fifths because of the nature of it." Okay? We went through all that for probably an hour and a half, because we got into this discussion of how should the cost be split, and so it was, uh, your partner's suggestion, Rich's suggestion, that we go through each item and talk about it, and see what, what a fair way to do it is. And having gone through all that, by twelve out of fourteen, as we did them item by item and looked at the, at the work, we said, "It has to be done on a system basis." Has nothing to do with whether you have ten households on the system, or a hundred households, or two hundred households on the system. This work, element, has to be done for each of the five systems. So the cost doesn't depend on the number of connections at all. There's no relationship to the number, whether it's ten or a hundred. It has to be done for each system. And so the only fair thing to do is to find this item by five. Having gone through all, all those items, the end result is you have to find by five. Now, after we go through all that, the small district says, "We can afford it if you divide by five." That doesn't mean it's not fair. A couple of points. One, our fire district had no choice, because you, the selectmen, put us in this pot. We didn't ask to be there, we're there. Okay? The, the theory of forming a fire district was that we could apply for a state grant on our own, do our own engineering studies, choose our own engineer, work on our own scope. That's all been taken away from us. Now, now you want us to pay per connection, where we're gonna subsidize the, the other fire districts, and, and we lose our, we lose the equity, because the work elements are by system, not by household.
Well, I just, just under-
Has nothing to do with household.
That's not the only reason they're in this, is because when they decided to form a fire district, they were told if they didn't get in the pipeline immediately, the money wouldn't be there. So Steve came up with the plan of the town applying. Okay, that's why the town, I don't think the town chose, no one, Steve hadn't come with the various problems.
We had no voice in it. We had no voice in whether we wanted to be in with the town or not.
Reeve Pennington and Steve were working very closely initially, and they were talking, and they came to the town. We didn't go to you people and say, "You're in this." They, they came here.
That's right. He, Steve Howard went out and tried to help us all in this predicament and problem.
Steve Howard has thrown us in the pot, and now we got a problem.
That's correct.
Which we did not ask to be in. It was after it was all done that we found out that Steve had thrown us in the pot. I will say this, that when we, before we even became a fire district, there was some indication that should we all go into a one big fire district, and our people said, "No, we do not want to." We, because there are too many differences, it'll be too difficult working with everything. We will move ahead, we will form our own fire district, we'll go to the selectmen, we'll get our own fire district.
we will choose our own person to do our study, and we will move ahead.
And we'll pay for it.
And we'll pay for it, that's what our people told.
Can they, can they still go that route, Peter?
No.
Yeah, they can still, yeah, but they're not, not to, not to the planning advance process under this money.
No, but can they apply for their own grant?
Yeah, but-
It's too late now.
It'd be next year, they'd have to, they'd have to, yeah.
The, the state will say that it's not efficient.
They won't, they won't qualify for a grant alone.
That's right.
Planning advance-
Well, then, if that's going to be the case anyway, then that's the way it is.
None of us would have qualified for a grant.
No, no, we all have different situations, our neighborhood may be a little more wealthy, for instance, or something, and their problems may be different, there's a lot of factors, but I, Marie, I was, were you at the meeting when, when Tim Raymond said your district wouldn't have qualified on their own?
Well, uh, um, the fire district, uh, problem for all the fire districts, as a result, as everybody knows, is the Mickey problem, okay?
Common problem.
It's a common problem, but, uh, the large fire district should not pay more, just because Mickey happens to own a small fire district, a system. I mean, there's not, there, there's no relationship between, between the two.
You see, I guess you gotta separate here. You'll each be a hundred percent individually, once you get the planning stage over with.
Yeah, we're, we're talking now about subsidizing-
This sizing will be no problem.
That's, that's right.
You see what I mean, once we get by this planning stage, they're each gonna be individual anyway. So there won't be any problem, they're gonna know what they're gonna be putting in and spending, and you know what you're gonna be putting in and spending. The thing here is this, no, really.
That's right, but the money for the study, you're asking us, or you're saying, or you're all saying this, that we, the larger districts, should bear a greater portion.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. You, you've got a problem, if you went to a restaurant, and you got five pieces of pie, and one's a little slim one, and one's a big thick one, somebody's gonna scream. Because they're gonna say, hey, that was all one pie, how come mine come out, you know, this big, and his come out that big? So you got that problem, number one. And I know you people got a problem, but the thing of it is this, is that he just said it himself, that they spent forty, they're spending forty percent of the money just on one fire district. So that it looks to me like it isn't, that wouldn't even be fair, you know what I mean? You said it's gonna, actually, about forty percent of it went into one district, and then you just took the pattern, and went to the rest of them.
In, in some items, John, that was an example, in, in some items.
So it just sounds like a complicated mess, and, 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 you know, and I'm not speaking for you people, but I think, just to be fair to everybody, I think the per capita would even help you, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have, uh, each one will be paying, paying-
We'll be paying thirty percent more as a group.
How do you feel that, Tom, by per capita, if all five went per capita for the total forty thousand?
The one method versus the other, one fire district pays twenty percent more than even split.
Yeah, but you got, yeah.
And they'll pay thirty percent more.
Yeah, yeah, but you really don't, when you stop and feel that, how many people in your, in your district?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, you're the biggest one, aren't you? Yeah, okay, but you've got thirty-nine people getting the benefit of that district, and, and those people may only have ten, see?
I'm sympathetic with them, but if, but if you hadn't thrown us into the pot here-
We, no, we didn't throw you in the pot, Tom, no, no, we, we had nothing to do with it. You people came to us, and we wanted to do all we could do to help you to get the money, yeah, no, that's, no, we didn't do it.
John, you wouldn't be getting the well money if they weren't for us.
The what?
Oh, you-
Oh, yeah, we had that already, we added this to it.
We just added that to it.
We had that, two, what, two years ago? This was added to it, oh, no.
That application was going in, that, that's wrong.
Then you should have let us alone.
We didn't, we didn't do it, you don't understand, we didn't do it.
We were, we were asked to include the fire district in it.
We didn't ask for it.
Somebody did.
Somebody-
And you, you guys are thinking that a fire district is a, is an independent municipality.
Well, then you didn't even have, then you didn't even have to get into it.
We didn't have a say, you should have allowed the person that came to you do it.
A, a world brick his, world brick history is that when Steve went to the state to get the money allocated, the fire, no fire district had been formed at that time, I don't think. And so what Steve said was, I can get the money set, there's a big demand for it, the town has gotta go after it, and it will commit it to the town, because there's a big demand for it. At that time, there was no fire districts even in place, so it, you know, it's a, it's a proverbial catch twenty-two, if you will, you know, had, had, had the, uh, the time allowed to continue until fire districts were formed, I can assure you, there'd be no money in the state. There would be, there wouldn't be any money, it would all be gone.
Well, we'd wait till the next cycle, but the state is very interested in having this problem solved.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so they would have given us enough points, because of the bad water quality, et cetera, et cetera, the lack of compliance with the water rules, that you can't say that we never would have gotten the money, you didn't mean to say that.
You mean if you went on your own, Tom?
Yes.
The state has been known not to give you the sleeves off their vest, we'll never forget that.
Oh.
No, you know, it, it, it certainly is possible that next year, you can get a line for, for funds, that, that's certainly possible.
I'll tell you, John, that the Public Service Department, and the Public Service Board, and the Agency of Natural Resources, who has a court case going against Sunshine Water Company, are very interested that we solve this problem, and, and that we participate in it. Very interested.
They haven't been always too receptive, I mean, we've, I've gone to many meetings explaining about the water, when Mickey was asked to do rate increases, and nobody was really standing up and down, saying, you're not treating these people right, and these systems are no good.
We have given input to the Department of Public Service, and the Public Service Board, on his latest rate increase, they're on up to fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Oh, you want a suggestion? I suggest at first, those, 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 uh, presidential committees, try to get together and have a meeting if you can. And it looks like if we're gonna be the last safe to get these people the money, oh my God.
I, I would suggest that the board be there, too, because they're trying to make a decision.
Well, no, no, wait, here's the way, I was gonna say it, Ray, I understand, I know we're the ones gonna make the final decision. I thought maybe if the presidential committees could get together first, and try, no, it might not work, right?
I think you've heard, it makes sense, I'm sure.
And then come to us, yeah, there's only three of you here, there's, there's supposed to be five.
We could really have an argument if there were five.
That will always be the problem.
Yeah.
The fifth, or the fourth, it appears, will never show up along with the others, so that they will always have a crutch to fall back on, and say, well, I wasn't there, you know, you made that decision, uh, I'm not satisfied with it, which will prolong applying for whatever has to be applied for.
Tom, are you saying, I heard you say about dividing up the fifth, that'd be eight thousand dollars a piece approximately?
No, I didn't say, I didn't quote a number.
No, that's-
No, 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 no.
Eight thousand per district.
Eight thousand per district. Use the forty thousand round number.
Tom, you can't just take the total, um, fire district work and divide by five, because there's some items, there's, uh, it's section three versus section five. Section five of the contract has, has the specific, special work, that's gonna be divided up properly.
Primary of field work.
Let's leave that aside. Section three of the contract is the, the general items, that apply to each system.
It comes with thirty-nine, seven.
No, 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 it's twenty-nine, five.
And that's about thirty thousand dollars.
About thirty thousand dollars.
So if you divided that by five, you'd get six thousand.
They'd get six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You'd about six thousand dollars on each, each-
Each one.
Fire district would get.
For that portion, then the-
For their portion.
And then there, then there's the field for, that's, that's the office portion, that's the-
That's the only questionable portion, really.
That's all they're getting, is thirty thou, thirty, thirty thousand something.
Well, the, the total is thirty-nine, seven, but that includes field work. And the field work can be apportioned by fire district, that's not, so that-
That's not the problem.
So you break down nine thousand dollars to, differently?
Yeah.
You, right, that's right.
Actual, on an actual basis.
So you give each fire district six thousand dollars, and then the nine thousand is broke down, however, each individual is, you put in the, the work you put in each individual company.
That, that is one, one alternative, Frank.
Well, that's how it's meant, like, definitely where we can go, otherwise we're gonna get a hair pulled out, you ever hit somebody else, I get a hair pulled out? Be stamped in the ground, and they're gonna pull the sod over us.
But why should we bear a larger portion of the cost?
You aren't, you're gonna, you're, matter of fact, for, for your little, their big district gets six thousand dollars, your little district's gonna still get six thousand dollars.
Yeah, but they gotta pay it back.
We gotta pay it back.
That's right.
Then, on top of that, you gotta pay your, which was fair, your specialty stuff that has specific relationship to your fire district, that's great. We pay for that, that's fine, because we're, there's only thirteen of us, they're only evaluating a small system, that's okay. But that larger planning study is done for everybody, this is a, this is a common problem. We are a, a whole entity, a whole group with the same problem. Now, why should somebody, thirteen people, pay not a percentage of the whole, they're paying one-fifth of the whole?
Then you're saying that each-
It should be done by each household.
One, one package, and each household will pay approximately two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Correct, or whatever the money comes out to be.
For the whole district, and leave it as one package.
If we were, if we were here, and no other fire district is here, they would have to pay that total six thousand, if the study was just being done for them. Those things would have to be done for their study. And more.
They'd have to pay more, they'd be getting more.
They keep saying, and they're right in saying it, that it was a community problem, the community had to be separate, be inseparable.
Be rolling up into five.
And where the prob, where the problem comes, Kip, is I can see, really, I can see what she's saying, that if it's six thousand dollars for each of the five, they're paying back, thirteen people are paying back six thousand dollars, where here, thirty-nine people are paying back six thousand dollars. So that this payment is gonna be much smaller per person than them, and, and every person is in it, so, you know, it's, it's fifty one and a half, and the other, but I can see where you're coming from, you're gonna be paying back the same amount with a lot less people.
But the reason we're paying it in the first place is because it was owned by one company.
Yeah, right.
It's one company's problem that we're all trying to find a solution for.
All for one, one for all, it's, it's tough, Tom, I, I know, I, I can, I can see what you're saying, and I can see what they're saying. See, that's where the, I can really see what you're both saying, I, I, I know what you're saying. The plan had to be for all five of you, and that's what cost forty thousand dollars. But then, on the other hand, when you think about it, you know, and I can exactly see what you're saying there. I mean, you're a fifth of that, that's all, but when it comes to payback time, it, it, it is a lot easier for thirty-nine people to pay back six thousand than it is for, for, for eleven, or thirteen, or whatever it is, but it's, you know, it's hard, it's- I, I would like to see you people try to think and talk that out, and then, and then come back to us with a solid, concrete decision.
Why don't all the citizens of the town chip in the hump?
Exactly.
What's that, well, if we could, if, you see, if we could, we can't, Tom, we're not in a water business.
But John, what he's saying is, it's like Rutland Town looking at the town of West Rutland. West Rutland is smaller than Rutland Town, maybe is not as wealthy as Rutland Town, but you, if we were to go to the taxpayers of Rutland Town and say, look, we wanna help out West Rutland, because they have high taxes. If we took Rutland Town tax money and paid West Rutland, the town of West Rutland, tax money for that, I don't think the townspeople, anybody, would be happy with that. I mean, that's, I, I really sympathize with what these people are saying, but I think we are committing another municipality to pay taxes for somebody else, because that money, it'd be one thing if that money didn't have to be paid back, then it's, okay, that's fair, to give everybody, you know, or, or divide it up to where it's needed, but we are committing these people to paying another tax.
Well, uh, yes and no, West Rutland has a fire district, and those people pay about three hundred dollars a year, I would imagine, for their, for their-
For Rutland Town.
So you see, no, but, but, uh, you know, I, I was out of water for two weeks, my spring went dry, so you get what you pay for.
I'll be able to handle that. What's wrong with that two eighty-five per household? It comes out to the same thing while I'm payback.
It, it's, it's not really the engineer to determine how it's gonna be paid back.
No.
There's not, I mean, there's not, there's, there's nothing wrong with any, any method, whatever you tell the state, they will go along with it, the state doesn't care either.
You gotta take it to the whole community.
I'm throwing this out to the fire district.
It's nowhere.
No, yeah, I think, I think somebody has to reach, uh-
I have, I'm an outsider, but I haven't heard whether the engineering firm can give a figure, after all this administrative work and field work, to each one of these fire districts, a solid figure on what it costs for that fire district.
You can, you can, but others not.
No, 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 we-
For each indu, each, each individual fire district, each portion, no, because, because if, if I just did one fire district, it would cost more than one-fifth of, to do it for five. There's economy of scale, a lot of this, a lot of the information, you're, you're not redoing it exactly, but you're redoing a lot of the same stuff. So some of the research you do, cost research-
Same, identical items, you divide it by five.
Yeah, and, and we went, like, like Tom says, we went through that, and the majority of the items that, that were, that were spread amongst the districts were, were, uh, basically all the districts were in there, there were two or three items where, for particular reasons, one or two fire districts were not included, well, then we, we, we modified those specific, uh, items, and if you look in the scope, those five districts are specifically excluded now in the scope, it's, it's exclude, or, or include, depending on if there was one excluded or two included. But, uh-
You know, when it comes to water, this thing you throw up in my mind, mate, you know, when we were young kids, we used to come in the house, my mother always used to say to us, wash your hands and face, soap and water is the cheapest thing you can get, and you know what, she was right on the soap.
I, I, I was just, Ron, that we take and go ahead and apply for the grant money, and then-
Well, we, that's the problem, we, we, we can't, I don't think we can finalize that, can we, with all this to say?
Well, we can follow up, or-
Go for it. My recommendation would be, would be, apply for it.
Yes.
The, the, I mean, and, and we'll, I'll write some words saying that's under discussion, how it can be a, a portion, now, will the state approve it with that? Probably not, but who knows, they've done crazier things.
If not, well, if you're out there-
If they come back and say you have to determine it, then you'll have to determine it. Yeah, I, I think it would behoove the fighters to get together, if that's possible, and discuss it some more, although I think we've discussed it now for about five hours, and I'm not sure we're, we're any closer. Than we were Thursday, but, yeah, yeah, as far as the process-
That's what we do, we have to do, to get the money, and to get that ball rolling anyway, yeah. Okay.
Agreed, huh?
Yeah.
No.
So what you're gonna do then, you're gonna sign this contract. I liberated the program that- You wanna look at it, Kip? You know, all the same shit that hold on?
Not all of them.
Did you ever think of the competition? It's hard, because thirty-nine, I guess. Yeah, see, I think, I think we're just scary, I think, they keep thinking that.
Is this, is this the main one?
Well, no, this is one, this is one, I'll, I'll leave one for Joe, for your father.
It's hard, boy, hold on, come to us.
I don't think so.
No, I don't mean that, but I mean whether you got left out or not.
They're gonna pay a hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Okay.
What about, uh, cost over?
There, there won't be any.
So, okay, we- So you're gonna keep a handle on what you're spending, and when you reach the end? What would happen if you started your survey at Pico Villa, being a smaller development, you would come up with the same, uh-
Same joint?
Results to your larger communities studying, you know, and in this way, you could actually, uh, finalize the time-
Four sixty-one, four sixty-two, make a one fifty-three.
How long is the time for Pico Villa to come out, to the next one, and then the next, and then the next one?
I, I think they're all different on, on the, uh, on the field, field work, you wanna have, uh, a lot of the field. We could, uh-
What was it?
How much was it, and then he would know what he has to-
Well, you take the six thousand divided by thirteen, is four sixty-two, you'll round it off, and you take six thousand divided by thirty-nine, that's one fifty-three, or one fifty-two, uh, round it off, per, per household. That, that doesn't seem fair, I mean, and the only reason we're in this problem is because we all belong to the same water company. It's not, that's the only reason it broke down into five districts, the only reason they became districts, instead of one fire district, was because of regional location, but we're all members of the town, we all pay taxes to the town. I mean, who goes to the grocery store and pays a different price for a loaf of bread, just because you're gonna make three sandwiches, and you're gonna make nine sandwiches?
But it isn't a town problem, okay? No ma, whether we'd like it to be or not, it's not a town problem, it's our Mickey problem.
It's a Mickey problem, that's right.
The only way we're gonna resolve that is by, no, everybody getting together. The only way we're going to resolve that is by, no, everybody getting together. Right, absolutely.
And the grant was thought, the grant was requested for all of us, all of all households.
That doesn't resolve the problem.
The planning of that was requested for all households.
I see, I can see.
You can see both sides. I mean, I can see both sides.
The payback time is, the payback time is when the small one is a killer. I can see it, yeah. No question.
I mean, if you got 10 paying back $6,000, or 40 paying back $6,000, it's an awful impact.
No, I think ultimately, the decision is left up to us, okay? Oh, yeah. It'll be a public meeting.
They can. But once this is done, you're on your own. The only reason why this is a community right now is because you only need to get money for it.
See how receptive they are to it, and get back to us. If we have to take action before the money is released, then we'll have to do it. No matter which way we go, somebody's going to get mad.
Yeah, well, that's...
That's why I want you there.
But there's one thing I think we all share here. We wish we weren't involved in this situation either, so.
It's only going to be the small group that gets mad.
Not necessarily.
Can you transfer money from one budget item to the other?
I did have one more question, not to do with this, per se, but the article that was in the Rutland Herald about, we had asked Joe to write a letter to the city requesting a meeting on the water, and I read in the paper that they were not interested in a meeting. I can't recall, did we get a copy of the letter that you sent to the city?
It may have been in the package, if not, I can't.
My question is, I just wondered, did you explain to them that that's what we were interested for, was the fire district? I mean, it was a little bit different situation than...
I'm writing to request a meeting of the board of recycling with proper city officials. And I may be aware the town has received a planning advance to study this water problem, and as a result, we may be looking at city water as an option there, but we'd like to talk to you.
That isn't the impression they got out of that. An alderman specifically come to me, and he says, "Did you get your letter from the city? It's what letter?" He said, "Our answer to your water letter." I says, "Well, I didn't realize the water line went off." But I knew what it would have been referred to. He says, "Well," he said, "uh, we said, 'Sure, we got water to sell,' and made a big joke about it, but that was specifically for these people."
But, but our concern was that we did not want each one of these five fire districts going and negotiating independently with the city. And...
But they did.
I'll show you. That's what I said. I said, "As you may know, we're studying for this problem, and as a result, one of the options may be city water for the neighborhoods." So that's why we talked. And I was at a meeting before that with them, talked to them at length. Quite frankly, Karen, I don't think they want to be professional on this issue of the town problem. And they gave us that little response on television quite frankly.
One of the work elements in the Dufrane Henry contract we talked about last Thursday at the meeting was, you know, one of the options that they're going to study for each system is hooking on to the city water. And they're going to try to find out from the city what the gallons cost would be.
Right. What we were concerned about was we didn't want to see individual fire districts going in and negotiating, so that one fire district was being given one rate, another fire district was being given another rate, and that kind of things, and to try and set up a meeting with the city to work these things out, and, you know, as an initial stage, before Dufrane Henry, talk to them about what the costs were going to be and all of that.
We would prefer that each fire district were, were the selectmen.
Right.
Right.
If they're interested in buying city water.
Well, we just wanted to make sure that everybody, all five fire districts are going to be treated fairly across the board type thing.
It seemed to me that if you come to get another contract with the city, that our districts would be part of that contract for the whole of Rutland Town.
That's what we tried, that's what we attempted to do. That's what the idea was, kind of, that's the framework.
It's only logical that we...
Right, but we were, I read in the paper that the, according to the Rutland Herald, the aldermen were not interested in meeting with us.
Did every district feel that they might want the city water?
No.
No?
Well, we will wait to see what the results are.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know what the consensus was, no.
Might not be economic.
Right, right. No, that's, that...
That was why we wanted to have the meeting too, to find out.
Talking about water, I was going to say that if everyone was contemplating getting the city water, then that's probably where the starch should have come in. If that didn't work out, then get into the other process.
But I think you have to study all of the options first to find out which one is going to be the most economical, which one is going to be... I mean, some of these systems in themselves, I don't think are in that bad of a shape. You know, some of the, like countryside estates, very well could fix their well and maintain it. Uh, but you won't know that until they've already studied this.
Yeah.
And in order to get construction money from the state, you have to look at all the options.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's the planning, sure.
You know, some said, "You can't exclude this item. You need it in the study."
Planning, yeah.
Can we move on? Because we've got a lot more to do.
Thank you.
We'll do with discussions. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Will Brownies help make the decision?
Got chocolate chips in them?
I knew Cliff would...
Of course, not to do with the line. Guard, knock it out.
Okay, Joe. The first item I have is actually a request from Rutland Storage Trailers. Evidently, they're bidding or have bid on a state contract, and they would like a letter of recommendation from the town of Rutland for this work that they're bid on. And I told them, before it authorized me, I'd write a letter. But I didn't, I didn't want to give the go-ahead that I was going to do it until I talked to you first. Bring that up at this time. I don't know. I would point out...
We ought to ask something, know what, we ought to have a letter from them.
I can ask for a letter. The other thing, too, Ron and I had discussed is...
Really, I think, you know, we've got to take a look at what kind of success we've had with them. We've had basically a real short contract so far. And then the time of the contract period, is it worth and satisfactory? Is the performance adequate what we expected? What kind of problems have been taking place at the transfer station? You know, I think we have to talk to the tenant up there to find out if they performed as we've been expecting them to perform. And while we're talking about a six-month period here, I, you know, I would be a lot more comfortable if we'd been through a year, maybe even longer, with a certain company before we make recommendations. Certainly not with all kinds of people who were there every day and dealing with, let's get it. So I, that's my opinion. I mean, the rest could speak for themselves. But I just think it's too short an amount of time with all the necessary input that we would have to have to make that kind of a judgment, forward any correspondence like that. I mean, someone asked me how, you know, if they've done satisfactory work up there. I can't honestly say one way or another if they have or not.
Yeah, I only have access...
I certainly wouldn't sign a letter to that effect without knowing that.
What we see over here, Ron, is only half of it too, because I deal with them on some administrative stuff. I've been fairly pleased with what's been going on, but Tony deals with that real one-on-one person and trying to get things done, and I think he's got a different feeling. But I'm not going to speak for him, and we're right, he's not here. I'll get back to them and tell them. Do you want, want me to request a letter and write it?
Yeah, we don't know what they want.
Well, all he said was, it was Mr. Medlin, who works for them, and he said they wanted a letter of credit. They've bid on a state job to get the solid waste going recycling from Berry and Montpelier. They go on to letter credit, a letter, letter recommendation from the town of Rutland as a municipal plan.
Why don't we get a letter from them and also ask Tony for his input, if he could jot down his ideas, and you could give us your input, and then we could take, take it all together and...
Okay. Okay. Um, next item I had, and Howard Burgess will talk a little bit about it too later, but I'll just briefly on it right now. It's not that matter. Howard and I, and also Brian Addy, who since last posted the Northwood Park over the last several weeks, took three days, or of course, we went through two. And what we noticed, or we discovered in the area up by the reservoir, which is owned by the city of Rutland, is that apparently, when they built their new facility, they clear-cut, well, there's no question they clear-cut. They clear-cut all the way back to what was the property line. It used to be, as recently as last year, in the woods. Now it's on the edge of a clearing. They cleared right to the edge. And in fact, it destroyed the old fence, so we found it 20 feet in the air, hung in a tree in some places, and others it wasn't there. And our signs from the previous year were gone too, because the trees have been taken down. So we thought, we bring it to your attention, I don't know the legality of it, but you may want to put them on some kind of notice. That we felt we reestablished it. We had a hand compass. We had measurements. We did some work in the field and put up our signs that we believed to be the town, city, not municipal line, but property line. So, do you think we need to do anything further? We haven't put them on notice yet.
Did they go over the line?
Um, well, there's debris and stuff on our side.
That should be removed.
And there's trees, some trees down. But again, we felt, we knew where the line was. It may take professional. I don't know.
If the line's been destroyed, it should be reestablished. And whoever destroyed it is responsible for reestablishing it. That is satisfactory. I think there have been a lot of city turnovers too much.
Same one that destroyed the road.
We did put up the signs, and I think we're, we may be right on the line, but it's, you know, it's still some question, I think.
I mean, if we're going to make Cooley do it on a sewer project, why on earth am we going to do it on a, on a project like this? We had a fence there. We had proper signs posting our property against hunting. All that was removed. We've got a bunch of residue now on our side of what used to be a fence. That's unacceptable.
Should I?
There should have been a buffer zone left there anyway.
Yes, Kip, you're absolutely right. In fact, if you go up and look at the erosion, you'll wonder.
What's that?
There's erosion taking place, and it should be corrected.
I was just going to say that, you know, they talk about cooperation, you know? They talk and talk about cooperation. I haven't seen it anywhere. You ask for a meeting for water, nothing to do with it. They go up and cut right up to your line, and maybe over your line. Don't come and ask if there's going to be an inconvenience or anything else. And those people talk about cooperation. I mean, you know, where is the cooperation? I haven't seen anything we've asked for, they've ever even wanted to talk. And I think that, you know, what I'd like, I think we ought to get a survey up there and put that line in.
Send them, send them the bill.
No, you know, and then you ask them to fix a road, and they say, "No, why should we fix that road? Usually it's more than we do." That's the attitude you're getting, you know? And they talk about cooperation. I don't understand it.
That definitely should be put back as close as the way it can. And if there's erosion taking place, that should be corrected.
Should I run the letter? Should I talk to Mark on that? I can certainly point out what's happened up there. I don't know if that's enough.
Uh, you might want to talk to Mark first. And if he's comfortable with easily a letter, then fine.
Why do they have to clear that? It's quite a ways from their plant, isn't it?
John, I couldn't believe how close our lines actually are.
To their plant, yeah.
Yeah. You, I mean, our, you could stand, well, basically, it's quite a sight. If you're standing at, there's a, there's a bank that comes down from that million-dollar storage tank.
Yeah.
That's on a one-on-one slope, it's straight up. Or our line is right at the bottom of that, you know? You could hit the tank in the town property with a stone. That's how close we are to the reservoir.
How does that, how does that, see, the stone, it never was there.
No, they built the hill. They knocked out that whole side of the hill and built the huge...
On our land?
No, on theirs, but they brought it right to the edge of the town property. It begins, like, there's no buffer. There's not an inch. Starts there and goes straight up to the sky. It's, it's quite a, quite a distance. You seen that million-dollar tank?
Yeah, I've seen the tank.
That whole hill was recreated there. That's where our property line is.
But it doesn't allow them to inflict any type of property damage on us, or remove any type of property that they're not authorized to remove.
Well, that's why we wanted to bring it here.
I don't care what they want to build within one, one inch of the line. The line, and whatever is on our side of it, must be retained by us, and it must be respected by them, and the condition it was when they got there, I respect that. And it will be.
Okay, I'll follow up on that and let you know what Mark wants us to do. You also signed your packet for informational purposes that there's been a claim filed against the town for allegedly connecting to a privately-owned sewer line located in the public right-of-way. That's Streams of Vermont. That building is commonly referred to as the forestry service building. Uh, it's owned by a gentleman in Leadwood. You should have seen that in your packet.
Where is that?
There's a note, sir.
Where is, well, what is, is part of our storm sewer project in the city. As part of that project, it connected into an existing storm drain. And after we connected to it, Mr. Crowley, who represents this person, who owns Streams of Vermont, said it was his line, and that was connected to his line without permission. And I don't, I'm not an attorney, but I believe it's a city line, and the city approved our plans.
I don't know what he's up there anyway for. I think it might have been a large package, Joe. It was in the contract. Yeah, I think it was. A large package.
Yes. But Mark has that now, and he's responding. Okay, I wanted to submit, uh, oh, submit this quick claim deed to Rod for the American Resources Corporation land that the town, the old pump station, is doing. The old pump station. We asked Mark to review this. He did, and Rod needs to sign it here. In fact, our board has to sign.
What is, what is it doing?
We're deeding back to them...
That old pump station on Holland and Solon.
51 by 51, which used to be the pump station.
We don't want that anymore.
They may have some development plans for that area.
Make a good fall sheltered on there.
What's that?
Make a good fall sheltered on there.
No, we filled it in.
Oh, it all filled in?
Yes, I love that. The 911 coordinator, we're talking to Mary Kirsten, perhaps her doing that.
You want?
She said she doesn't really want to do it, because she plans to go to Florida this winter, and we'll be able to put the kind of time into it that's going to be needed. So what we do need to do is still come up with a local person, somebody who could be a contact person. Probably attend some meetings and interact with other board members as issues develop with this 911. Right now, I don't know what those issues are going to be, but I'm sure there will be some in the future. I am the data person, so I'll get all that information. I'll see everything before it goes out of here. But you still need to appoint a, a someone, some town resident. Along those lines, and I'll be real brief, I've gone through and inventoried all the roads in the town that have more than three houses, or three or more houses that aren't presently named. And I've got maps of all those, and what I'd like to suggest, with your permission, is start contacting people by telephone, you know, during the day, at these places, and suggesting to them some of the names, or ask them for suggestions, like, for instance, Kip's, where Kip lives. There's three houses there.
And Rob, Sean, Drive.
I think it'd be appropriate, well, I wanted to talk to you about that. I think it should be Rob, Sean, but I had an idea, and if you don't like it, you can tell me. One of the things this 911's all about is to alert emergency vehicles, to let them know where they're going. All these streets on here are unapproved town roads. The town can't make any guarantee that any of these roads will plow in the dead of winter. My thought was, is I looked at all the map and all the streets, there's not a single street that ends in place in the town. They end in extension, drive, road, you know, so on. My thought was that all the non-approved roads ought to end in the word place. It's going to be Rob, Sean Place. It'd be Shady Place. It'd be Red Pine Place. That way, whenever the call came in, whoever's responding would know it's not an approved town road. And they don't know what to expect on the way out there. Other than that, they would not know what kind of road they were going on. So it's just a thought.
I think that's a good idea. Let's do one.
I'll, I'll contact the people, if that's okay. I'll make some calls during the day.
Do you have any idea who would like to spearhead the 911? Would you like to be interested in it, Rod? I know you're involved in emergency services. I just thought maybe you know someone who'd like to share that, be the contact person. Joe, Joe's done a good job here. We've got, you know, John, Brian, Tim, Perry, I mean, they all have input, but we need someone to make the Montpelier meetings, or the Waterbury meetings, or wherever those meetings are held. You know, we don't need someone tonight, but if you could come up with someone, or anyone could come up with someone, we need, we need to have a person that could do that.
I do need to mail that in in fairly short time. The application maps that were mailed, and the deadline is this Wednesday. That's all been in for a week or so. We do need to follow up with this last piece of paper. If you want to get back to me, I think we have to get that. The last item I have is payment here for Rod to sign regarding the Northwood Sewer Project. And I would point out that this does not include the 10% retention, for what it's worth.
Before we sign the payments for...
Wait a minute, what'd you say?
Before we sign the payments for Cooley, did, did Quirk's leave? I saw him here.
No, he'll leave with his, John.
Did they leave? Let me tell you something. Did you get a call yesterday?
Yeah, I went down.
I went down. I'm going to tell you something. There's a mess there. I don't think I signed the paywall check.
I've had it.
I've had it. You're going to ruin that well. That water's coming right down that road, running right down that driveway like a brook. Did you see it when it was running, Heather?
I did, Jim.
Look, I did. And it was running right to that well. Gentlemen, they're going to be salting the roads pretty quick. I'm not signing anything for Cooley. I've had it with Cooley. That's the biggest mess I ever saw. And those boys are furious, and they've got a right to be. I never saw such a thing in my, it comes all the way down that road, and where does it go? Right into that driveway, right through that side, the sidewalk you put in, and right into that... into that whole yard, that whole yard completely. There was a flood yesterday. Now, you can't leave those people like that. And I blame one person, and one person only, Cooley Construction. And I'm not signing a pay voucher. I want to see those jobs done. I'm sorry.
That was discussed today at the meeting, and they're going to be going back out to that site.
Well, we'll pay them after it's done, because I've had so many promises now from them people, it's, it's, it's just ridiculous, and you guys go ahead and sign it, I won't sign it. I've seen too many people hurt on that, on that job over there because of the sloppy workmanship, I guess is what are the malstoke. And I think it's just a shame.
This 10% retaining and maintaining?
How much money are we retaining?
This is what I want to know.
The 10% you're retaining.
Is that the 32 days that they're...
Then, then, then that's in addition to the 32.
That's addition to it.
That's correct. So you're holding $24,000 at $750 a day for being late. You're holding 10% of the total contract, which is what?
Sixty, sixty-seven thousand.
Right. And it's also, there's no invoice in here for any cops beyond the $900 that you've already paid for. So it's, it's per your last directions.
All right, oh, well, if you're holding the money, okay.
So, so we're going to be holding about eighty, eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand dollars?
You are right now, yes. We, we met with the attorneys there in Middlebury, and there may be a proposal coming out of that in a few days for the board to look at.
Because I, I'm not for cutting it down to 5% like we did in the last...
No way.
No. Now, 10% is, should be held at 10%.
Should this be signed or not? Because I'm the only one that's...
Mark Sperry felt it should...
So what are they going to do for Quirk? Somebody ought to be done, I'm serious about that. Something should be done before...
They discussed what the, what's going on up there, John, between where the catch basin is and the curb, there's a fairly wide distance where the water's traveling. Ideally, the catch basin should have been closer to that curb, so it picked up that water. They're going to do something with some pavement, hopefully direct it into the catch basin or something else, and Kip's already...
The catch basin could never picked up that water because the old, needles from the trees, when I got down, there was a berm that high, all the way around that catch basin. No way you could want to get in there. So that catch basin, the number one, is in the wrong place.
Well, that's where Don wanted it. I mean, they put it where he specifically showed them where they wanted it.
If that, if you got that running, okay.
Well, he, because he was up there. He met with them, I believe, and showed them.
Where is this from?
The court closed it.
Seven also left if we go from Route 7.
You know, I, I don't know, we should get into all that, but, you know...
Well, we, we, we've got to get into all that. There's a big problem there, and if we start salting the roads, we're going to have a problem.
Well, I understand that, John. I don't know if you want to...
I think it should be done tomorrow. I really do, Rod. I don't know if you got up there or not.
No. I think it's, they know it's important enough, and Kip already talked to Pete Andrews, so I think it's going to be...
Well, I'm going to tell you, you might have talked to Pete Andrews. Pete Andrews is a good fellow, but you know, our engineers, what they got paid on that job, haven't listened to everything that was said. We signed it or not then, I mean, if we've got $86,000...
If we've got $84,000...
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Anything else, Joe?
That should almost cover it.
Yeah. I'm telling you what. I had a question on the Rutland Aerial Cultural Alliance letter that was in our packet, and I've asked this question before. As far as individual organizations, I would like to see them be separate ballot items and not included in the general budget. I think the taxpayers should have the right to decide which organizations they want to support. I understand, Dick told me that it used to be items that were under 500 or under 1,000. Can't remember the exact figure, that he would just include them in the general budget, and...
But last year, Karen, we took out a whole bunch of them.
Okay, but this is what's happening with this letter, the way I am interpreting it is that they just want a flat $300 donation, and I, I think that we should make it clear that any of these organizations that want that should be separate ballot items and be required to bring in the percentage of signatures.
Yeah, we took out a bunch, a whole bunch out of the general budget. Then last year, we had in there for years, we took them out, so people could vote on eventually.
Right.
Dick and I have never agreed on that. I've always, I've always wanted all those requests to stand alone, because they really don't have anything to do with the operation of the town.
Right.
Their agencies certainly, you know, probably, most if not all of them are worthwhile, but they really don't have a lot to do with the operation of town government, and I think...
I don't think it's fair for us to include them in and tell people they're going to pay this, just like we're a police service or a fire service. I mean, you know, it's a separate organization and then...
No, I agree. I agree, and like Kip said, we did take a lot of them out, and I think they all should be out.
Maybe we need to have Joe send these people a letter stating that and letting them know that they need to follow that procedure then.
Call the ballot room. Well, you know, see, there could be many...
Lot more than they're just starting.
Could be many more of those letters that come in that went to Dick that I don't get.
Yeah, we usually just keep them all, I always keep them all, and we write them all later.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's, you know, I don't want them coming back and saying we weren't fair and we didn't notify them, but...
We usually just keep them all on the ballot, uh, at the end of the year, stand on their own.
Yeah, but with no signatures or anything, don't you require signatures from some groups or none?
If they send you a letter, that's what...
Yeah, they do.
Huh?
If they send you a letter, somebody should sign it.
They're expected to show up at town...
No, 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 what I'm saying is, isn't it normally to have something put on the ballot?
No, not that.
For any of these money items, no matter how much it is, they don't have to have a percentage of legal voters in the town bringing a petition? Or no?
It's our discretion.
It's our, it's our...
It's what...
We can put them on, or we can choose not to. Or we can forget it.
And the letters, I mean, that's like a, like an approval to do it, so they can't come back after it, so you could...
It's a letter requesting to be put on the ballot, that's all it is.
You'll see a bunch of them.
Yeah. Anything else, Joe? That's it for me, Rod. Okay. Uh, Timmy's not here, fire chief, of course Dick is laid up. Bypass consulting letter, I know David's waiting to discuss this, right?
Yeah, I, I didn't get to read in detail the letter. I have the impression it's a substantial amount of money, so I, I can't tell you if that's an appropriate amount of money. The fellow did appear at the bypass meeting, he did make several statements there that I thought were pertinent and to the point. He does seem interested in participating. Where, where we are in the process is the EIS draft will be coming out within another month or two, and then there's going to be a public hearing, which the town, along with all the parties, interested members of the public can give testimony at the, the hearing. So the timeframe is kind of short, and then they're allowing another two weeks for public comments. There's really only 30-day period after the draft comes out to respond, so I think it'd be wise to have somebody on board or at least familiar. The biggest problem we are having really is that we cannot get the documents from the Federal Highway Administration, and the state will not release them, they're claiming executive privilege, so it's kind of hard for this fellow to, to do much detailed analysis of their work when they won't release their work. We do have bits and pieces of it that were done early on.